Yeah, cause I have.
All right.
All right, uh, welcome everyone. It is now, uh, six thirty, six thirty-one exact. Uh, welcome to the regular meeting of the planning zoning commission tonight, uh, October the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Um, we do have a quorum here tonight. I have myself, Derek Parks chair. Uh, to my left, you have Michael Brayley, vice chair. Um, you have Karen Stanfield member. Um, you have Suzie Mendoza member here tonight. And, uh, alternate member, we have, uh, Mr. Brian, uh, Bale. Uh, for our city staff, we have Ben, which is director of development services. And Roderick, which he is the planning zoning manager. Uh, we have one consent agenda item tonight is, uh, considered of approving the minutes. Uh, of the following meaning, meeting minutes of City of Red Oak Planning Zoning Commission dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Commissioner, do y'all have any questions or concerns regarding the, uh, consent agenda item we have? Can I have a motion for that agenda item, please?
Move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Eyes have it. Uh, we have one member that wasn't, uh, present, uh, last month, but, uh, that agenda item has been approved. Uh, moving along to the new business, uh, we have two items tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about those, uh, together. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is start off with number two. And number two is conduct a public hearing to consider zoning change and amendment or request from AG. Uh, PD one-six-two to PD one-six-two revised, which is also one-six-two R. Uh, for the development of a data center complex, uh, on approximately hundred and twenty-nine point six-two acres. Uh, which includes P I N numbers, one-eight-one-three-five-two-three-zero-five-eight-one-one. Uh, City of Red Oak, case number Z S and zebra, C S and cat, two-five-dash-two-five requested by, uh, Michael Westfall. But also too, I'm gonna read in, uh, agenda item one, um, which also is, is, is not a public hearing, but it is approving a preliminary plat. Uh, for Loop Nine Land Partners addition, uh, commercial development on approximately hundred and twenty-nine point six-two acres, uh, of land. Uh, actually, the P I N numbers on that one is gonna be one-eight-one-three-five-two-three-zero-five-eight-one-one. City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas, and that, uh, agenda, I mean, number is P S and Paul, S S and Sam. Two-five-dash-two-five, and also too, it was requested by Michael Westfall. Staff, please.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commission. Um, yeah, so this one is going to be located right there off of Loop Nine, as you mentioned. On the screen, we kinda have that general area where this one is located at, so it's this larger parcel that's right here. We'll kinda jump into the plating, uh, preliminary plat first, and we'll kinda move along to the zoning with this one. So it's gonna be eight lots for this one, um, that they're proposing, a total of eight lots. That total area is gonna be a hundred and twenty-nine point six-two acres for this one is what they're proposing, so we'll kinda look.
Why don't you actually show the plan first so they can see how the buildings are gonna lay out?
Gotcha.
Cause it's hard to make sense of it on the preliminary plat without seeing the buildings.
Gotcha. All right, so this is the total largest scale down the site plan for this one. So kinda just showing you all of those, that large area. So we have, of course, our switch stations along with where our buildings are gonna be laid out. As well as towards the bottom, there's gonna be a park that's gonna be located at the bottom. So we'll kind of get down into this site plan. This is the, the larger, uh, portion of it. So, uh, we look down into it a little bit more. So of course, this is that park as mentioned, then we have some of our buildings, some detention area that's gonna be on the site. As well as our additional buildings and ours, um, substations and switch areas also that's gonna be on that site. So, and those are broken down into the different lots, so you can kinda see that lot configuration where we have it. So we have the, um, our common area lots, as well as it's broken down on here, as you can see on the site plan, where our lots are kinda configured here. Um, so you see the common areas, which is the, gonna be the one X lot, and that's gonna be a large portion around this entire. Uh, this subdivision area, and then, oh, sorry, went the wrong way. Then where our additional buildings are gonna be located, those are gonna be on the different individual lot areas. Then our different areas as well, you have those lots, so. Um, and we will jump to the other exhibit to where you can kinda see our.
So that when we're looking at preliminary plat, the, it's got, the lots layout a little funky. Um, they're not just rectangles like, like you mostly see.
Right.
Uh, and that's to, um, allow each building to have its own septic system. So that way they can lease the, the buildings out or sell them to different people, um, in the future if they wanted to. But, um, one of the rules we have to follow, uh, for septic systems is they can't, a system can't cross a property line. And so if, uh, if we had tried to have one big shared system, um, and lots, we just, we couldn't do it. Cause the lines would cross the actual property lines. Uh, and so that's where, that's where we kinda get into these kinda stranger lot layouts. So typically, we would, uh, say that, you know, every lot has to have frontage on a public road. But in this case, it's got frontage on these common access easements. Um, so that effectively functions as a, as a, as an access for the, the properties. You know, we don't want them to be public roads, cause one, they don't want the general public to be driving on them, and two, we don't wanna own them. Sorry, I was just projecting while you were.
No worries. Uh, definitely appreciate that additional, um, breakdown for, for context for everyone. So, um, did wanna point out one or a couple of different areas for you guys that you can see. So along with this, um, this development plan, the applicant has incorporated an additional portion of the property in, to include into the zoning. Um, so kind of, I'll jump back to our map so you can kinda see, um, this area. So we are including this portion of the property into the zoning to include into their zoning. This is about, um, almost eight acres, so about seven point eight-six acres of land that is getting included. Include, that is getting included into the zoning, um, and which it just, it flows right into the additional exhibits and into the, um, site. So it's nothing that's changing with that particular area. It's just getting folded into the zoning and been developed with everything else. So as you can see, we can look at that area. It's just kinda right, uh-oh, right here, all this area here. So kinda getting included in, inside of all of that, all of our different, um. Easement areas and where that kinda switch yard is into the northern portion of the property, so.
Yeah, so you see two of them up there. One's gonna be a private facility that's just for the data center use. And then the, um, the other one is gonna be owned and operated by Encore. So that's why there's, you kinda see two different layouts there.
Uh-huh. So another point, uh, another area that we will, that we do want to point out is towards the southern portion of the property. The applicant is going to be, um, constructing a park. This park will, um, after construction, probably on down, down the line, not probably immediately after construction. But it will end up getting, um, donated or transferred over to the city. As far as, um, to our parks department will be maintaining it moving forward. Um, it's how that one will go, and it'll provide a buffer from the residents that's down to the south as well. So it'll provide a little buffer from these residents here, um, give them a little bit more, um, ease from that, that northern. Um, data center area, so as well as constructing this right of way along Staying Back Road is what they'll be doing also, so.
Yeah, so a big, when we originally zoned this, uh, with the concept plan, you know, a big part of it was getting stained back realigned. So that it wasn't in this, uh, really bad ninety-degree S curve. And so they're smoothing out the curve there, um, but that, what that does is leaves us with an unkinda, kinda of an orphan piece. Yeah, exactly. Uh, that's, you know, not big enough to build a house on and, uh, probably not. Well, I guess you could build a house on it, but, uh, probably not a great spot for our house. But, um, uh, city management asked for a park and they provided a park instead.
Okay.
The last point, and this is kinda the layout of that park, um, kinda how it is envisioned right now. Um, the last point of, for this zoning is, just wanna point out for clarity is that we have. The applicant is proposing to update the, the proposed uses or the permitted uses to include that electrical substation. And, uh, transmissions line and the park into the permitted uses, just so that everything is kinda clear inside of the zoning. The previous zoning did not include those as permitted uses, so those can be built on individual lots and not, um. Be in violation of our zoning ordinance and the planned development within itself. So those can be constructed on those individual lots is the last portion. So we can move forward with the zoning, um, and not have to come back and update something because there was an error. Um, with those, those, uh, those uses being developed on individual lots. And that is really the, um, the biggest components of this one. All of our elevations are pretty consistent with what we've previously had. We do have the exhibits here. Um, and with that, I'll stand for any additional questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, staff. Um, agenda, um, new business, agenda item two is a, uh, public hearing. Uh, we will talk about that one first. Um, since this is a public hearing, uh, those who are in favor of this item, you can come forward. Those who may be against this item, you can come, um, after those individuals. And if you have, uh, something to say regarding agenda item two, please state your name, your address, please. And the floor is open.
Uh, yeah, Rusty Cohen, uh, development with Lincoln Properties. Uh, we're applicant, uh, property owner, uh, address, uh, eighty-one-eleven Douglas Avenue. Uh, suite six-hundred Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-five. Um, again, as staff pointed out, uh, we've added, uh, eight acres to the property. Um, we were able to modify that concept plan that was with the original text chain, change, uh, back in November of twenty-three. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have on the development plan.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, or maybe have questions or concerns regarding agenda item two? Yes, ma'am. It's still open, yes. If you have any questions or opposed, yes, ma'am, you're in order.
Um, well, my name is Dr. Monique Comby Foster, uh, actually, um, one-on-one time driver. The corner of Tom Driver and Staying Back, which I think is about two, two hundred feet away at an angle from this particular site. I think this is the gigabyte? Is this the gigabyte site?
Yes.
All right, all right. I know a year ago, we're here again a year later, the other site, I guess. There's two sites, I guess. One that's already built and we can actually see, and this one that is not built yet. Which is what we're talking about today. Is that correct?
We're correct. We're talking about a new one next.
A new one that has not been developed yet, but two separate companies.
Right.
Okay, okay. So, uh, the one that's most impactful to me, or that will be most impactful, I think, is this particular center. I guess I have a couple of questions real quick. I, I'm not gonna hold you long. I know your day's been longer than mine. Um, the substations, there's already some substations up on, um. Staying Back and Bachelors, right? Isn't that a sub, is that the electrical substation there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that a substation with those big electrical things? You know, it's Bachelors and Staying Back. There's about three houses or whatever on there. And then there's, there's some subst, electrical substations there, right? Or a switch or a switch.
There's a gas switch yard.
Okay, gas switch yard, okay. So I'm visualizing that, using that, because it's like a switch yard. Is not the same electrical, but gas, but similar structure. Is that going to be on that property?
It'll be on the property, but on the north side of the property, like.
Closer than not, Loop Nine?
Right, excellent nine.
Okay.
Roderick, if you can maybe pull it up for.
Okay, so that, the switch station is not gonna be on the south side. It's gonna be on the north side.
It's gonna be on the north side.
Okay.
So you, you wouldn't be able to see it, the building is most likely.
Okay, I that's, I just wanna make sure I was looking at it right.
Sure.
So it's on the north side.
Yes, ma'am.
Neck and land in the Loop Nine.
Yes.
Right. Uh, on the south side, that, this right here where it says sheet two of four, that little what's gonna be there?
Huh? It's a big pond. It's already a pond right.
Oh, it's gonna be a pond. It's already pond feet and the cows already, I think. But it's gotta be like that, right?
But much bigger.
Oh, okay. Well, ponds are not bad. I, I don't have.
Well, it'll be, it'll be dry and wet or just dry. Dry and wet, so it'll. Yeah.
Okay, dry and.
Similar to what it looks like right now.
Similar to what is it? So that, so on the other side of it is where the data center gonna be?
That's where the buildings start, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
On the other side of the pond?
Yes.
The wall that they say that, that, that they promised a year ago that they're gonna put a beautiful wall up? Is that still beautifully gonna happen?
So there's a lot of landscaping. Do you have the landscape plan pulled up?
That's just gonna help me think about a year ago what they said to today.
So there was, there's, there was a set of options, I believe, and the options, one was a big ugly wall.
Yeah.
And the other options were nice landscaping and birmingham and things like that. And so the, I think we're going with the, the Birmingham option with landscaping, so.
Go ahead, sir, if you wanna add something to it.
Is that here?
Yeah.
Her question.
Yes, ma'am. Um, again, Rusty Cohen, the stain back down here on the south part of this. We've dedicated thirty-two and a half feet, I do believe, to widen stain back out. The, the eastern building is two-hundred-and-sixty feet north of that road. And yes, in between there, it'll be landscape. It's, uh, it's got the berm that was called out in the original, um, zoning back in twenty-three. And then there'll be, again, trees, landscape along with that as well.
Okay, so which will work as a buffer between the citizens and the building.
Yes.
I'm familiar with the bu, ber, buffer, cause you know, the landfill has a big one over there in fair.
Yeah.
Doesn't look cute though, but that, y'all said they're not gonna make it look pretty.
Yeah, we got all those, look at all those dots on that page.
To this, huh?
I do not know.
Reason why?
I do not know what was said two years ago before I was hired here, so.
Oh, wow. Okay.
It will, again, it will be bermed.
Okay.
Uh, to the height that was in.
The plans.
The, yeah, the, the original zoning code.
Okay.
Uh, back in twenty-three, the PD that went with this, and it'll have, again, landscaping on top of that.
And so tonight is just to approve these plan? Is that, am I understanding, the, the P S D board is doing two things, including the upper new piece that was acquired.
Correct.
And to a plant, to approve their plans. Is that the goal?
Correct. It's the site, we call it a detailed, the detailed site plan, yes.
Yes.
I hope I, you're just as generous to me as you are to them when I come. With my vision for my lot, that's it.
What you got? What you got?
We were definitely looking.
Retiring. I bought this ten years ago with retirement in mind, wanted more agriculture. I didn't know I was gonna get, these gonna be my neighbors, but that was ten years ago, right? And things happened in ten years. So as, you know, as long as you're a good neighbor, you know, hey, no one doesn't like a good neighbor. But they don't want bad neighbors either, so. Uh, I didn't, when I bought it, I didn't have this in mind. I didn't know data center. Knew about the Loop Nine though.
Yeah.
Because that's been years ago planned. So I knew Loop Nine was in years eighties, right? But I didn't know about the data center. But I guess tonight, you've answered my question. The switch is similar to the gas switch. It's on the north side. It's not on the south.
So just to be a hundred percent clear, it, it doesn't look like the gas switch station. It's gonna be a lot bigger. But you're not gonna see it, cause the buildings are gonna be in the way.
So it's gonna look like Mount Rushmore?
Uh, what's the second tallest bu, uh, mountain in the world?
That's what I was, that's why I use it. I'm just being.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kidding with you. Uh, but it's, it's, it's similar. It's gonna be closer looking.
But it's. Away from the residence.
Yeah.
Not on the south side.
Correct.
The north side where there's nothing but highway.
Correct. It'll be shorter than the three-forty kilovolt lines that are going right through your property, though. Right? You've, you've got the big electric lines that go over the, the top of your property or right next to it. It'll be shorter than that.
There, there's.
It'll be shorter than.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's electric lines on that west property line that we've got those, those two. Um, and the, the original concept plan had the substation on that west side and had access down the stain back. We've been able with that new property that we're bringing into this, the eight acres, we were able to move that all up to the north. We were able to eliminate that drive off of stain, but we, we still have an emergency drive over here on the east side, which will probably.
That's an emergency drive, but not where your employees and different people will be.
Correct. They, they will all come.
Hopefully from on the top.
Yes, from.
Yes.
There's not.
From the north side.
Correct.
Only, maybe some of your employees.
They, they, well, they can go around, but like, I don't know where our employees be coming from.
Okay.
But.
There will be a little row between, there's a house there next to that property. It will go, there will be a row between there, right? Where this burn, you know, where you got your burn.
Yeah.
On that side.
This, this is staying back right here that you're being, where you used to come down the S curve, but it still comes down there.
I'm over here. I'm not even over.
Drivers over on this, he said. So yes, this will be a drive along that east property line over there.
Okay.
But again, it, it'll be an emergency access. It'll be.
Emergency access.
It'll be gated.
It'll be gated.
The only, the only time it should be used.
In emergency.
Is, yeah, for city police to enter.
Absolutely. So it's emergency access.
Yes.
You know, very simple.
Yes.
And city access, you're.
But, yeah, the point is like.
The main access will be here off of Loop Nine here.
Perfect. I think, I think you've answered all of my questions. I wanted to make sure all the nuisance items were taken care of. So thank you. That was my top questions about the wall, but you decided not to do the wall, but to do the burners, which are trees. Right, right. Okay, okay. That's, that was the extent of my questions for the night. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right. And I hope you're just as generous.
Yeah, we, we don't give stuff away. We, we have to look at it, but yeah, we, we will look at it. Um, a, anyone else tonight? All right. Yeah, I, I remember that. Yeah, you are correct. Uh, can I have a, a motion to close a public hearing, please?
I'll move to the closing hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Uh, public hearing has been closed. Uh, commissioners, do y'all have any, um, questions or concerns?
I have one question on the screening wall. We are allowing a, uh, final coded chain link fence. Did we allow that on any others? I don't recall seeing that before.
So that's the same language that's been in every data center. Uh, you basically get the option. You can do wrought iron. You can do the black metal, uh, chain link, uh, with, it, it says it on there, doesn't it? Roderick, it has the options listed, um, with the landscaping, so, but yes, that's, that's been the same.
Okay, I just didn't remember that.
It's been on everyone.
Anyone else? All right, staff.
And just so you guys know, when we do have the data centers, we're, everybody's kinda getting the same deal. So we just, we basically just take the same language that has been on every data center and then just tweak it for site-specific things.
Okay.
But just so you know that in the future, if we get another one back.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Uh, commissioners, y'all have any, any questions or concerns that y'all have tonight? Suzie? All right, uh, can I have a motion for agenda item two, please?
Move that we approve agenda item two is presented.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Uh, agenda item two has been approved. Um, also too, can I have a motion for agenda item one, please?
I move that we approve agenda item one is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm on it, uh, chair. It'll be agenda item two and agenda item three.
Uh, never.
Oh.
One, one is minutes.
Uh, under new business.
I'm sorry, new business. I'm sorry.
One, sorry, okay, under new business.
Yeah, cause he, he opened it under new business, so one and two under new business.
Yes, I'm sorry about that, right?
Yeah, one, we're fine. The, the wording you use is just fine.
Yeah, okay. Get some startup. Uh, can we have a motion for agenda item? I mean, for new business number one, please.
I move we approve that item.
Okay, I mean, he had a question, kind of threw me off a little bit, but.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. New business number one has been approved. And can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, everyone, tonight. That is the.